All right, everybody. It is 7:00 PM and I'd like to call this meeting to order. While this meeting is being held in person, in consideration of ongoing COVID-19 health concerns, we are also offering the option for the public to participate through Zoom if preferred. Instructions on how to participate virtually are included in the City Council calendar item listed on the front page of MissionChaos.org. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and unstruck.
Ms. Folks, please call the roll. Thomas?
Here.
Boltinghouse?
Here.
Loudon?
Here.
Riard?
Here.
Kringle?
Here.
Inman?
Here.
Josie?
Here.
Davis?
Here.
All right, we do have a revised agenda for tonight's meeting, so I would entertain a motion to approve our revised agenda.
Mayor, I move the City Council approve the revised October 26, 2022 agenda as printed.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Robin, please call the roll. Riard?
Hi.
Davis?
Hi.
Kringle?
Hi.
Thomas?
Yes.
Loudon?
Hi.
Inman?
Hi.
Josie?
Hi.
Boltinghouse?
Hi.
Motion carries. And before we jump into the rest of our agenda tonight, I did want to note that we have a scout here tonight. Carter Wright. Carter is here for part of his Eagle Scout project, I believe. If you wanted to come up and say hi and introduce yourself. Or will I come to the microphone so people can hear you?
My name's Carter. I'm in 219. Okay, I'm here for a merit badge for Eagle Scout.
Great. Glad to have you here tonight. And we we have one other special guest in our audience tonight. We have Harper Thomas, who is Councilmember. Thomas's daughter is here tonight visiting us as well. So let's try to keep things interesting tonight. All right, so moving on, we do not have any public hearings, so we will move into our special presentations. We also don't have any special presentations tonight, so we'll move on to issuance of notes and bonds. We do not have any items related to issuance of notes or bonds this evening, but later on our agenda, we will be discussing an upcoming potential bond issue for action in November. And so with that, we will move into our consent agenda. Our consent agenda has five items tonight. Our council committee is met on October 12th and fully discussed each of these items. The committees agree that the items listed on our consent agenda are routine enough to be considered under a single motion. If a council member or member of the public would like an item removed from the consent agenda, they may request that at this time. If not, I would entertain a motion to approve.
Mayor, I move the City Council adopt the consent agenda as printed, items 4B through 4E.
Second.
Right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Robin, please call the roll. Thomas?
Yes.
Boltinghouse?
Hi.
Loudon?
Yes.
Riard?
Hi.
Kringle?
Hi.
Inman?
Hi.
Josie?
Hi.
Davis?
Hi.
Motion carries. All right, now we move into public comments. If any members of the public would like to make a comment on items that are not on our agenda this evening, now would be the time. If you are participating through Zoom, please either add your comment in the chat feature and it will be read out loud, or note that you would like to speak and we will call on you shortly to make your comment verbally. Please remember your comments or questions are visible to everyone in the meeting. If you are part of our in-person group tonight, please raise your hand but stay seated and we will call on you to come to the lectern to make your comments. When you make your comment, please state your name and city of residence for the record. Also be conscientious of others trying to speak and speak slowly and clearly. If I need to confirm something that may have been difficult to hear, I will ask for clarification. Emily, do we have any online comments? I'm not seeing any audience hands, so we will move into our action items from the Planning Commission. We have five items coming forward from the Planning Commission. The first is consideration of rezoning of five parcels at the southeast corner of West 58 Terrace and Knoll from PBP and MS2 zoning districts to DND Downtown Neighborhood District zoning district. Sneller, will you please provide your report?
Thank you, Mayor. Did you want me to do 220 or 2220, 2221 and 2225 altogether in conjunction? The rezoning, the PDP and the
Yeah, that would be fine.
Okay.
Plat? And then we can, yeah, we can do the motions at the end. Yeah.
Okay. So case 2220 is the rezoning of five parcels at the southeast corner of West 58 Terrace and Knoll Avenue from PBP to MS, PBP and MS2 to DND. Case 2221 is the preliminary development plan for the townhome project known as Mission Vale. And case 2225 is preliminary plat of 5819 Knoll Townhomes. These are all in conjunction with the same project. The project is located at southeast corner, southeast corner of West 58 Terrace and Knoll Avenue, and it currently consists of five contiguous parcels on the block between Knoll on the west and Birch on the east. The applicant identified the following criteria as reasons for location and housing type: to revitalize a previously vacant section of land close to downtown, to promote a pedestrian-oriented environment, to attract a stable renter base, and to respond to market demands. Site is currently vacant with the majority of the land area vacant for at least the last five years, and two parcels were recently cleared by the property owner for the development. Surrounding properties are zone PBP, MS2, or MS1, and the subject property lies within the East Gateway Overlake District, within a half block of Johnson Drive in the downtown commercial district. The 2007 comp plan, comprehensive plan, classifies the property as downtown district, and the 2022 draft update classifies future land use as mixed use downtown. A desire for more urban housing types to sustain existing and local businesses and residential uses, and the need for increased tax base and to attain quality redevelopment are parts of those plans. The adopted Climate Action KC Plan recognizes and encourages transit-oriented development and bikeability to achieve net-zero carbon emissions. And rezoning to downtown neighborhood district encourages moderately dense residential infill, supports downtown commercial activity, economic development, and housing near transit, which supports bikeability and walkability admission. Planning Commission considered the application for rezoning against the 14 Golden Rule criteria and determined that the proposal meets those criteria. The preliminary development plan for this project includes 19 two-bedroom townhome units with traditional style. The preliminary development plan meets the requirements of the Mission Municipal Code with the exception of a minor deviation for the rear setback at the drive in the rear and is recommended for approval by the Planning Commission with conditions A through K as part of your packet. The developer will construct pedestrian sidewalks on all three sides, include park benches, landscaping with new shade trees, and EV charging capability with garage, with, within garages. The developer is not requesting incentives for this project. Staff requires that stormwater infrastructure tie-in is detailed in the final development plan and the final plat and approved by staff prior to construction. Preliminary plat details utility easements and that the property contains sufficient public right-of-way and the dimensions of which are in accordance with municipal code and recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. There's no dedication of right-of-way with this plat.
Does that conclude your report?
That concludes my report.
All right, do we have any council discussion or questions? Seeing none, I would first entertain a motion on the rezoning.
Mayor, I move that the City Council approve the rezoning of five parcels at the southeast corner of West 58th Terrace and Knoll Avenue from PBB, PBP and MS2 zoning districts to the DND Downtown Neighborhood District zoning district PC case number 2220.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll. Boltinghouse?
Hi.
Davis?
Hi.
Kringle?
Hi.
Loudon?
Hi.
Thomas?
Yes.
Riard?
Hi.
Inman?
Hi.
Josie?
Hi.
Motion carries. All right, I would now entertain a motion on the preliminary development plan.
Mayor, I move the City Council approve the preliminary development plan for a townhome development at the southeast corner of West 50th Terrace and Knoll Avenue, Mission Vale, Planning Commission case number 2221.
Second.
Right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll. Riard?
Hi.
Kringle?
Hi.
Loudon?
Hi.
Inman?
Hi.
Boltinghouse?
Hi.
Josie?
Hi.
Thomas?
Yeah.
Davis?
Hi.
Motion carries. Right, and lastly, I would entertain a motion on the preliminary and final plat. Mayor, I move the City Council approve the preliminary plat for the 5819 Knoll Townhomes, PC case number 2225.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Right, please call for the roll. Davis?
Second. Hi.
Inman?
Hi.
Riard?
Hi.
Kringle?
Hi.
Josie?
Hi.
Boltinghouse?
Hi.
Loudon?
Hi.
Thomas?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right. Let's see, then the final item for consideration from the Planning Commission is approval of the final plat of the Mission Preserve project. Ms. Sneller, will you please provide your report? Oh, I skipped an item. I apologize. Our exciting ones. The next item for the Planning Commission is consideration of the preliminary and final plat for SMSD Horizons at 5900 Lamar, Planning Commission case number 2226.
Thank you. This is the subject property at 5900 Lamar Avenue at the southwest corner of Lamar and Johnson Drive. Previously unplatted, this was a previously unplatted property, and when the applicant submitted documents for construction interior renovations and exterior, minor exterior renovations in the rear courtyard, the city requested a plat for this property that time with sufficient right-of-way for public works project in the future along Johnson Drive to widen that sidewalk. The preliminary and final plat dedicates sufficient right-of-way for future full build-out of the sidewalk infrastructure at that location, and all requirements of the municipal code have been satisfied with this plat and recommended for approval by the Planning Commission.
All right.
It's my report.
Great, thank you. Do we have any public comment on this issue? Not seeing any hands, so we'll open it up for council discussion. Any council comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move the City Council approve the preliminary and final plat for Shawnee Mission School District Horizons, PC case number 2226.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Please call roll. Loudon?
Hi.
Boltinghouse?
Hi.
Thomas?
Yes.
Josie?
Hi.
Riard?
Hi.
Davis?
Hi.
Inman?
Hi.
Kringle?
Hi.
Motion carries. All right, and for real this time, the final item for consideration from the Planning Commission tonight is the final plat of the Mission Preserve project. Will you please provide your report, Carrie? The subject property is at 51st Street between Foxridge Drive and Riggs Street. Riggs ends in a semi cul-de-sac that's not completely paved at this point. It's part of the area the applicant is dedicating to the city with this final plat. A small rectangular shape about one-quarter acre in the northeast corner of the property, slightly encroaches on a residential property there at 5101 Riggs as well. The applicant dedicates this entire quarter acre section of the plat to the city, and the city will dedicate a portion of this to the residential property owner later. All dimensions of the plat are in accordance with the municipal code and recommended for approval by the Planning Commission. All right, do we have any public comment on this item? Seeing none, we'll open the floor for council discussion. Any council comments or questions on this one? Yeah, Debbie?
Just want to make sure the resident that we plan on using some of the property is apprised and okay with that.
I think it's actually the opposite, that we're dedicating a land to the resident. Is that correct?
So once we receive the dedication, we get to record it with the county. We're going to reach out to the neighbor that's on the east side of Riggs, because there's a very small triangular section that's actually in their front yard. We'll talk about vacating that to their property.
Yeah.
And that'll probably be sometime beginning early next year.
Yeah, so part will be city right-of-way, and then the part that's actually in that yard will go to that neighbor.
Part of the city right-of-way, including that ball, the turnaround area, the little small triangle. Probably no bigger than this area right here, that'll just dedicate to the property.
Okay, but the neighbor is on board with this, correct?
Yeah, we haven't talked to him in a while, but the developer talked to him last summer. He's on board, so.
Okay, thank you. Now, Ken?
The turnaround, can you explain how that's going to happen? Is it just a area at the end that's going to be circular there, or how's it going to be?
I'll let the public worst director answer that question.
Hi.
Hi.
So we've worked with the fire department because they have to approve the size of the cul-de-sac, so it's going to go down and then it's going to have a wider bulb on that west side. So they should be able to turn around. So it'll be kind of an offset cul-de-sac.
Great, any further comments or questions on this item? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion on the final plat of the Mission Preserve project.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll. Inman?
Hi.
Josie?
Hi.
Davis?
Hi.
Thomas?
Yes.
Kringle?
Hi.
Riard?
Hi.
Boltinghouse?
Hi.
Loudon?
Hi.
Motion carries. All right, thank you. We will now move into our committee reports. Councilmember Boltinghouse, will you please provide a report from the Finance and Administration Committee?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Finance and Administration Committee met on October 12th and considered three items. The meeting minutes and a resolution declaring the items a surplus were approved under consent agenda earlier this evening. An ordinance imposing a 3/8 cent citywide retailer's sales tax for parks and recreation, and approval of the 2023 Legislative Advocacy Contract with Little Government Relations LLC will be considered under the regular agenda. Item 7A is an ordinance imposing a 3/8 cent sales tax, citywide retailer's sales tax, in anticipation of the expiration of the Parks and Recreation Sales Tax in March of 2023. The City Council spent 18 to 24 months working through a series of conceptual park planning processes to develop a list of preferred outdoor park improvements. Based on the needs identified and residents' willingness to support increased investments in parks and recreation maintenance, the council elected to ask voters to consider renewing the sales tax at a rate of 3/8%, which mission voters were presented with via a September 22 mail ballot election. Voter turnout for the mail ballot election was set 25.73%. The election results were certified on September 27, 2022 by the Johnson County Election Office with a total of 1,820 total votes cast. The ballot measure passed with an 86% approval. The final step in the process requires the City Council to formally pass an ordinance or formally impose levy the sales tax and provides for notice to be provided to the State Director of Taxation that the sales tax will become effective on April 1, 2023 and expire on March 21, 2033. The ordinance has been prepared by Gilmore and Bell for council consideration. Mayor, I move the City Council approve the ordinance authorizing the imposition of a special 3/8% point 375% retails, citywide retailer's sales tax to finance parks and recreation-related improvements to become effective on April 1, 2023 and expire in sunset on March 31, 2033.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on our park sales tax? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll. Thomas?
Yes.
Davis?
Hi.
Loudon?
Hi.
Inman?
Hi.
Riard?
Hi.
Kringle?
Hi.
Josie?
Hi.
Boltinghouse?
Hi.
Motion carries.
Item 7B is the 2023 Legislative Advocacy Service Contract with Little Government Relations LLC. In 2020, Mission, along with several other cities in northeast Johnson County, contracted with Stuart Little of Little Government Relations LLC, known as LGR, based on an interest in participating in a voluntary coalition of cities for government affairs and advocacy services in Topeka. Mission has worked both independently and collaboratively with LGR for the last three years for legislative affairs and advocacy services. The weekly updates during the session, and then when they're out of session, it's monthly. Assistance with crafting testimony and the overall education and information provided about relevant legislative issues and the legislative climate have added value, helping to support and inform city staff and council on a timely basis. Additionally, LGR has been available to participate in ongoing conferences, education, and information sessions related to various pass-through funding via the CARES Act and the American Rescue Plan, ARPA, and to keep the city appraised of important updates and changes. Mayor, I move the City Council approve the 2023 Agreement for Legislative Advocacy Services with Little Government Relations LLC in an amount not to exceed $10,000.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, Robin, please call the roll. Josie?
Hi.
Loudon?
Hi.
Boltinghouse?
Hi.
Thomas?
Yes.
Davis?
Hi.
Inman?
Hi.
Riard?
Hi.
Kringle?
Hi.
Motion carries.
That concludes my report, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Josie, will you please provide a report from the Community Development Committee?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The Community Development Committee also met on October 12th and considered four items. Those were the meeting minutes, the pavement condition inventory update, the maintenance agreement with Rushton Elementary School, and the maintenance agreement with the 58 Knoll apartment project, which were all approved under the consent agenda earlier this evening. So no items will be considered on the regular agenda this evening, and that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Next, we move into unfinished business. We do not have any unfinished business on our agenda this evening, which takes us into new business. Tonight, we have two items under new business. The first is an updated 2023 budget resolution from Morris Smith.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So I think you'll recall that we reached out a week or so ago and asked for new signatures on the budget certificate that gets submitted as part of our state budget forms. The, we had too many cooks in the kitchen working on the state budget forms, and as we had plugged in before we made the final decisions on how we were going to allocate particularly the ARPA funds and the other excess fund balance that we were doing, we hadn't made those decisions prior to publishing the public hearing notice. So the public hearing notice gets published, it sets your maximum expenditure limit. So we had plugged the dollar amount in as a placeholder. Then after we adopted the budget, we, and I had done that, Brian went in and spread the actual allocations into the appropriate departments, but we ended up with a placeholder still for those funds. So we were exceeding the maximum expenditure authority that we had shown in our original budgeted public hearing. We didn't actually adopt a budget that did that. The forms just didn't align, so. So we, you all were kind enough to re-sign that certificate. We have resubmitted. All is good with that. Each year, we pass a budget resolution. It is not required under state statute. It is not required by the county. It's something that we've done because it helps us communicate with the public, sort of our tax and fee policies and major policy objectives in the course of a budget. But because we have done it for so many years, the county wanted us to pass another resolution to align with the updated certificate. Mill levy rates didn't change. There really wasn't anything number-wise in the budget resolution that is changing. But we felt if they were, we talked to them on several occasions about, is this, is this really necessary? And they did feel like they wanted to have that for their files, and it's something that stays with them. It doesn't go on to the state. So we prepared an updated budget resolution that is for your consideration this evening. I did add two whereas clauses, just so from a historical perspective. In next year or five years from now, when we look back, we can understand the difference in why we have two budget resolutions. So that first whereas clause that's highlighted in your packet should read, whereas the City Council originally adopted resolution number 1123, which was the budget resolution that was passed on September 7th. We'll plug that number in. Approving a revised 2022 and 2023 budget. Then the second whereas clause just states really more the rationale for why we're doing that. And that error, as I mentioned, is we just sort of had a double, doubling up of some expenditures. So this is before you, for your consideration tonight, really just a housekeeping item, and then we will get that sent off to the county and hopefully be finished with the 2023 budget, right, Brian?
Yes.
All right, I would entertain a motion on the revised 2023 budget resolution.
Mayor, I move that the council approve the updated budget resolution adopting the 2022 revised and 2023 proposed budgets for the city of Mission.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any council discussion on this item? Robin, please call the roll. Kringle?
Hi.
Boltinghouse?
Hi.
Davis?
Hi.
Thomas?
Yes.
Riard?
Hi.
Josie?
Hi.
Loudon?
Hi.
Inman?
Hi.
Motion carries. All right, our second piece of new business tonight is a continued discussion about debt financing for street and park improvements. Laura, will you please share your information with the council?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And Emily, if you'll bring up that presentation, and I did not. It is included in, Robin updated that to the packet late this afternoon, so if you want to follow along, I did not print copies of that. If you want to follow along, we'll have it on the screen, but it's also available on your iPad as a part of the packet. We wanted to just really come back and talk with you again. I know at our last meeting, we talked a little bit about trying to get this debt issue accelerated and accomplished prior to the end of this calendar year so that we could take advantage of the bank qualified rates. If we issue, and I, I think I gave you a little bit of misinformation the last time. I thought that the first $10 million of, in any year that we issued was available to and qualified for the bank qualified rates. That is not the case. You have to issue $10 million or less in order to take advantage of that. So it, in a year where we issue more than $10 million, so in the event that we do reach an agreement on the gateway project and issue the special obligation bonds, that would still count towards our bank qualified limit. So we think we save on average about 25 basis points per issue with the bank qualified rate, so it is meaningful for us. And so we are on a little bit of a fast track to try to reach the objectives that you all had asked us to do as we looked at renewal of particularly these dedicated revenue streams. So next slide, please. Just this is a recap of what we talked about. Why now? We now know we have guaranteed repayment streams in the form of both the street sales tax and the Parks and Recreation stat, sales tax. We have the ability to take advantage of the BQ rates if issued before the end of this year. We know we have a cash flow need particularly for the Foxridge Phase 2 project that is our cars project for 2023, and potentially an acceleration of the parks projects. All of the existing debt for streets and parks retires in 2023. And again, the council has just expressed a desire to really demonstrate meaningful progress to the community in both of those program areas. So next slide, please. Last time when we looked at this, we had run several scenarios. We presented a $5 million, a $7.5 million, and a $10 million scenario. As we, and I had those numbers just really the day of the meeting, so I hadn't had a lot of time to dive in. But the bottom line, as we looked at that the, the other night, was we can't really comfortably manage debt service on this, either the seven and a half or the $10 million issue. So between that last meeting and this evening, I've been working with Bruce Kimmel at Ellers, our municipal advisor, and our bond counsel to sort of get, maximize the dollars that we have available within comfortable debt service limits to try to resize this issue. And so, street financing recommendations will include about three, a little over $3.5 million in net bond proceeds that will be probably eaten up by the Foxridge Drive Phase 2 project. Current engineer's estimate is five, five and a half million. We have 1.6 million in cars funding. So we really need about $3.9 million to cover that gap. We have other funds available to do that. The other thing we had talked about was trying to accelerate some portion of the residential street program. And that becomes challenging. One of the things, as we really tried to right-size this debt issue, we know we need to sort of preserve our bonding and repayment capacity as we look at some of the other larger projects, particularly the Johnson Drive, the next phase of Johnson Drive. We still have several grant applications in flux. We don't know how much of other people's money will be coming in for particularly that project. We're doing the updated PCI inventory to see if there's any sort of reshuffling of streets in the residential street program. But what this really did is highlighted something that we've talked about for the last couple of years as we were building the residential street program, and that is we, we have competing needs on our arterial and collector streets and the residential street. So those are coming more clearly into focus as we get closer to having the, some of the larger projects designed and getting through those other funding processes. So this is what we need right now in order to be able to accomplish Foxridge. It will also allow us to accomplish all of the streets. So there were four street segments that were targeted for 2023. It will allow us to not have to defer any of those. We should be able to get all of those to stay on track. We accommodated the design for 55th Street in this year's street program budget, so that is in design. And I think it was included in your project status up And I think it was included in your uh project status update, and you've heard Celia talk about the fact that the utility relocations will likely push construction of fifty-fifth street into twenty twenty-four. But what this does, it, it keeps us uh debt services at an affordable limit. And it allows us not to fall behind in the residential street program. Uh, it doesn't allow us to accelerate like we had hoped potentially, but it keeps us on track. And then if we, um, there's a chance that I think the, the engineers are being conservative in their estimates on Fox Ridge. We would hope that the bid would come in better. So every bit that we can save um and, and, and sales tax performance is still, still strong. Um, will, will give us the opportunity uh to come back and have those other conversations. Um, and then we can always, because we're funding a significant portion of our street program with property tax mills, had that conversation about, you know, evaluating each year as a part of the annual budget process, how much that transfer and what that transfer looks like. Next slide, please. On the park side, we, this uh debt issue as we would currently recommend it, and you'll see more detail on this um next week at the committee meeting, and I'll touch on that. Looking at about just a little over three million in total, that would be um to get waterworks completed. And hopefully uh also continue the construction and complete Mohawk Phase Two. We touched on the last time we discussed this. We've already, we're already using existing parks and recreation sales tax revenues to jumpstart. We've done the Anderson Tennis Courts. We've got Mohawk Phase One in progress. We've got the uh Streamway Dog Park in progress and the Broadmore Trail uh under design and then construction. So we're touching all of the parks. This would just then allow us to keep the Russian rebuild and the waterworks park improvements aligned with one another. As we mentioned before, I think there are a lot of other opportunities for grant funding and outside funding, particularly for some of our park projects. So we can bring those um, those things in. Um, and we can write this i- in such a way, we can write the descriptions of the projects and the master CIP in such a way that um we can kind of share those funds between the parks. So if we see some savings with waterworks, that can be applied to Mohawk or, or vice versa. So next slide, please. So just kind of a quick review of the funding scenarios. And again, um, I think you all know uh November is a little bit of a crazy month uh with council schedules. So this was our last meeting to have all of you here until we get to our meeting on November twenty-first. So I wanted to at least kind of lay out kind of where we are, because I know a couple of you will not be here uh for the committee meeting next week. So we built a funding scenario with a ten-year repayment with level debt service. Again, we've evaluated multiple scenarios. Um, we've tweaked numbers back and forth for the last probably week, week and a half. Uh, the challenges still remain the same. Um, on the street side, cost es- escalation, need to balance uh residential and arterial and collector streets, the pending status of outside grant funding. Uh, and then gateway revenue, one of the things that we touched on briefly, um, was just sort of that revenue uncertainty. So if the gateway project moves forward within the existing life of uh the sales taxes, assuming no renewal on the street side, we would be generating another seven hundred and eighty-two thousand five hundred dollars. If we were to renew that sales tax and go into the full twenty-year life of the gateway um development agreement, we would be looking at a total revenue additional revenue on street sales tax of about two point three seven million.
And Laura, those figures are the dedicated streets.
Those are the dedicated street sales tax, correct. Um, so that would add to, right, the, the one or the the percentages that we're already collecting, and that, that's just based on the retail activity that would be anticipated to occur at that site. Additional revenue that would, um, that would come forward. So obviously that opens up some different conversations, uh, and that's still a question mark. As we know, um, hopefully to be resolved later uh next month. On the park side, again, cost escalation is somewhat of a factor. One of the things is that we've been watching parks projects and, and some of our surrounding neighbor communities. Uh, trying to collect information and make sure that we're building our park improvements as efficiently as we possibly can and stretching the dollars. Um, so there's a lot of good uh resources that can be shared. We do have funding needs for other amenities. Some of you saw some of the investments that were made here through the FCA P program, but we want to make sure that while the emphasis, and we've heard um council loud and clear, the emphasis is on outdoor park improvements. We certainly don't want to do that to the detriment of the other facility, parks and recreation facilities that we've invested in. And then gateway revenue uncertainty, again, the estimated um over the remaining life of the current sales tax on the park side would be about another eight hundred and ninety thousand. The difference between that and streets is just the one-year difference in timing uh of, of when they would take effect. And again, but over that current uh twenty or twenty-two year period, about two point three seven million. So next slide, please. So our next steps um would be, if you all are comfortable with this, I mean, I think this is um it, it's a reasonable level of debt service, um, something we could certainly manage. Uh, we would look at the committee meeting next week to bring forward a resolution for your review that would authorize the bond sale. And also a resolution adopting a master CIP. So one of the things I think you may recall that we talked about several months ago was that financing parks improvements are handled a little bit differently under Kansas State statutes than financing street improvements or financing stormwater improvements. So we passed a charter ordinance a year ago when we did the FCA P improvements and finance streetlights to give ourselves the ability to adopt a master CIP. And as long as we identify projects where we don't have that specific statutory authority in a master CIP, we are able to proceed with debt financing for that. And so we would be looking at a master CIP that would include um the park improvements that are, are contemplated. That would then move forward to your regular legislative uh meeting on November sixteenth, at which time you would potentially adopt both of those resolutions, authorizing a bond sale for November thirtieth and adopting that master CIP. It, um, we'd be targeting a special city council meeting. It will be very short for a bid award from a bond sale that would occur earlier in that day. So we would take bids. I think we talked about it our last meeting, trying, trying to sort of thread the needle with the bond market and the holidays. Uh, present some challenges, and I think Bruce's recommendation is that we could um comfortably get all of the other things done that we need to do that are involved with, with taking an issue uh and getting an issue into the market, hit that November thirtieth date, and then be able to close on that bond issue prior to the end of the year. Uh, so we would anticipate, if we can follow and stay on this schedule, we would anticipate a bond closing on December twenty-first. So we would have bond proceeds in hand at the end of this year and ready to go. So a couple of the other things at the bottom, um, there's, there's a lot of work that happens uh internally with preparation of a preliminary offering statement, which is the document that goes to potential uh bidders on our bonds that talks, it's our financial information. It talks about the nature of the, the issue, just a review and execution of the bond documents. And we also have in the works, and you will see in December, um, being positioned, so uh doing an RFP and/or contract awards for the actual design of waterworks and Mohawk Park Phase Two. So that we would be able to, once we have the bond proceeds, we've already selected a design firm, and then we could just kind of keep that rolling to meet, meet the timeframe that we have. So next slide, please. Uh, let's see if there's one after. I don't think so. Oh, okay. Um, in the packet, there's the actual sort of bond. If you're geeky like me, there are, um, there's an updated CIP and street programs that we looked at in the last, and you can kind of see the impacts of those debt service payments on the bottom line um there. And then there's also a report, a pre-sale, kind of a target uh run from, that is prepared by Ellers that will show you um debt service and where those debt service numbers came from. So it's really no action on this this evening. I just wanted, you know, to be able to answer any questions because we are on a pretty tight timeframe. So that we know what to be prepared for when we come back next week.
Yeah, Ken.
Laura, this is probably something for future discussion. Probably along the lines of budget process, but one of the concepts we've been having is this notion of cars programs versus regular street program. And we always go for the dollars with regards to the cars programs because of the matching funds that we get from the county. I think that at some point we have to have a discussion. It's more of a policy discussion, I believe, that those dollars that we get from the county should in some way be credited to the residential the residential uh rev- revenues basically for future projects. In other words, balancing out what we get from the county for a cars program and allocating that in the future for residential street improvements. I know it may slow down some of the arterial projects, but at the same time, it would balance out the funds that we do for matching and we get from the county to allocate those dollars to residential streets. Do you understand?
I, I think I understand. I think there are, I, I think we absolutely need to have a conversation about structurally, how are we going to fund both of those? Um, I think part of the challenge that you have is we don't, we don't just chase the cars projects because we have matching funds. So we've been very careful to align um the cars projects with what is a recommended maintenance cycle on a street. So you'll, you know, what, what you'll see is that we're doing the cars streets that are in our five-year CIP program are not full-depth reconstructions. That's what they were ten years ago. Um, and they're now in, at that point in their lifecycle where they need that intermediate maintenance or those UBS treatments um particularly. And so part of that is we have, i- in, if we don't want to take a step backward, whether it's residential streets or those arterial streets, um, we need to make sure that we're doing that intermediate maintenance so that we don't have the full-depth reconstruction expense on an arterial like we had in the past. And so I think that, that is, um, we know we were really far behind and that we're spending those, you know, having to look at full-depth reconstructions almost exclusively on the residential street side. Um, but I think what we have now, and the mayor and I were talking about this earlier today, is we've got some time because we just have hit this period of time where we've really geared up our residential street program. But all of those arterials that we have, have done in the cars program are ready for that next wave of intermediate maintenance. And so it's kind of like this perfect storm that has happened in this kind of five to seven-year CIP period. And so I think now, um, particularly once we answer the question on the next phase of Johnson Drive. So managing the, the UBS overlays for just the cars project. Um, it will take a little bit of creativity, but I don't, it does, that's not a big stretch in our budget. It's that twelve million dollar next phase of Johnson Drive that is going to be really significant. Um, we should know maybe November um about how much STP uh how, in terms of the funding from STP that we will have. Um, and then that will allow us to figure out then smack and cars and all of those other kinds of things. Um, and, and so I think we'll just have that clearer picture and can really put together what is that plan? And maybe it's a three-year or five-year plan to sort of get us over this hurdle of this next stage. But then I think we can kind of catch our breath on the arterials because we'll be back in a longer um maintenance cycle, if that makes sense. It's frustrating.
Does make sense, but what I worry about is that the residentials get bumped every time when there's a doubt about the funding. And that's something that I'd like us to be mindful of and make sure that we still remain with priorities on residential streets.
Yeah, and I think that, yeah, I mean, I think that's, we've, we will do everything we can, and the five-year CIP shows us holding firm at that two million dollars a year, you know, level. And, I mean, the Fox Ridge project is a perfect example of a larger project that's been bumped for six-plus years, I think. Um, and to a certain extent, so that we could come back and really make a meaningful start on the residential side. And that, and so some of those larger projects have suffered, and it, every year, I mean, it kind of feels, I mean, Celia would probably tell you, it feels like a little bit of a shell game. To try to figure out which, you know, which one we're going to do. So I think, I think we understand and appreciate that. It's just now I think we're at a point where we've got a couple of years' experience with the residential reconstructions. I think the PCI inventory may, it, it may show um no real changes, but it may show some things that we need to reevaluate altogether. But I think as we move into particularly next year's budget, but we will have a lot of those things ticked off before we get into July and August of next year, we'll be able to really have some good conversations around that in the coming months.
Yeah, and I think that is an important point, Laura, that you mentioned, and it'll be in the updated packet, that this does maintain that two million dollars a year uh for the current CIP period um on the residential straight program and keeps us on task with our planned twenty twenty-three projects. So this bond issuance wouldn't allow for an acceleration, you know, unless we find revenues elsewhere, you know, if project costs are less than anticipated, but we would stay on pace with that enhanced residential priority and two million dollar funding that we uh talked about during the budget cycle.
And we already knew that with the streets that were anticipated for design for this year, we were probably going to get, we were going to start to lag just because of the costs um uh and particularly some of the streets that have some of the higher stormwater costs. So we don't, we, we will not have that lag. And we will stay ahead. And then, um, you know, Celia and I've talked too about keep making sure that we stay ahead as much as we can on design of streets coming up in future years. So that as we have savings or as we identify additional revenues, we, we're ready to sort of, you know, pluck that, those plans off the shelf and get those projects constructed.
Yeah, and, and for example, we're keeping with doing the design of fifty-fifth, right, so that it would be ready if we did have extra funding.
Absolutely.
Yeah, Hillary.
You can answer this at a later date, but I'm just wondering if with the CIP, there were any um conversations about upping the two million just with inflation and costs as they're continuing to go up, our impact with that two million dollars each year down the line is going to be less just because of, you know, so maybe this is a conversation for budget process next year, but um thinking about upping that as our property values continue to rise, thinking about bumping that up for the residential street.
Well, and that's part of why you heard us recommend in this budget process, moving away from strictly tying that transfer of property tax revenues to a, the equivalent of seven mills. Let's look at the needs of the streets in that particular budget year and see what we can accommodate with that transfer. So, um, you know, we, it's grown incrementally over time, but we may want to, to be able to be more flexible with that, to be able to respond to many of those same things.
Any other comments or questions for Laura? All right, well, we will not be taking any formal action on this item tonight. Instead, we'll be taking up this issue again at our November second Finance and Administration Committee meeting next week, and again, targeting a November thirtieth, twenty twenty-two bond sale. Thank you, Laura. Um, there being no further business items for consideration, we will move into comments from the city council. This is an opportunity for comments from our council members. Does anyone on the council have something they'd like to share? Yes, Ken?
I know you're going to be covering this later, but I just wanted to say kudos to you for the report that you gave for the second and third quarter activities. Very impressive accomplishments, uh, very well described. There is um one element that I think that we might be looking toward in the future, and that is with regards to the business turnovers that are going on in our community. While we highlight and look at, at new businesses that are starting, I don't know to what degree we track those businesses that are leaving or closing. And do we have any kind of historical um material with regards to that? It's not in the report.
So when I took over the city clerk's position in the summer, um, I've gone through and um re-indexed all of the um business database that was there. It was really out of date. So um, we were, we started at like eight hundred and something, we're at four hundred and eighty-two as of yesterday.
800 and something, we're at 482 as of yesterday. So those are active open businesses that I've been able to identify. So when a business is closed, I can, um, put it in the database as closed. So now we've done that. So I can run you a report of closed versus open. Close this year, close last year. So I do have that information. It's not public, but I can make it that way and get it.
Do, do we ever look at the, any reason for the closure?
We don't. And probably because I haven't been in their role for very long. My, my work was mostly administrative to have the records updated. So it was a lot of Googling or calling businesses with the information we had or just personal knowledge. But we can definitely, we don't have a, a reporting way for businesses to let us know that they're closing. So it typically comes up during license renewal in the summer, or if, like I said, if somebody says that this business is moving or closing. So I'm not sure what we have in place for that now, but it's definitely something I could talk to other city clerks out in the area and see if they track that and how they get that closing information.
The reason this came up is I know that there's some recent closures in the community. And it was made aware to me that some of these closures were because of landlord disputes and things of that nature, that the landlord is not maintaining property in an adequate manner. And we keep talking about retention of businesses. And so if there's some way in which we can monitor that or find a way to work with the Chamber of Commerce, the, the Mission Business Group to identify what are the reasons for, it's kind of like employees leaving a a firm and, and having some idea of why they've left.
Yeah, I definitely think that we could look into finding that information out because I think it would be good for most people to know.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I think invites will probably be going out tomorrow, but we will be having a business town hall slash listening session on November 9th, and it will be a, a mission city event, but Dub Settle with the chamber has also agreed to participate and we'll be extending invites to our mission businesses and hopefully get more information on sort of the current, current climate of our, our small businesses and other businesses in the community.
There have been occasions where we have been contacted, um, and we've been talking internally about what, what could we strengthen? What opportunities do we have? What limitations do we have? The challenge? As with every story, there's three sides to each one. And so that, and I think figuring out how we can be there, how we can listen. We've had historically high turnover rates in many of our businesses. It's just been in some respects, a function of the lease rates. And I know we don't have a formal program for sort of business retention visits, but that's something that as I know, particularly Emily is out and about and talking with folks, you know, just doing those regular check-ins and keeping those lines of communication open. But that's one of the things that we hope to really talk with the businesses about on the ninth is how, how and where can we communicate? And we don't, we, we can't help if we don't know the situation. Um, and they're not always brought to our attention until after a business leaves. And, you know, they say we've thrown up our hands and we're frustrated with that. So.
I know we do residential inspections or especially in the apartment buildings. And some of these may be chronic situations where the upkeep of the building or the infrastructure or whatever is not being maintained. And I don't know that we have any inspection program for that, or if that would be something that could be pursued for that purpose, especially with the frequent flyer, uh, businesses.
I have also heard a number of businesses are leaving because of the fact that the maintenance of the buildings. Is that any way that it could come under a code enforcement? Position or something like that?
Yeah. And I think that's one thing Laura and I were discussing earlier today that she was going to look at for that November 9th meeting. I don't know if you want to speak to that, Laura?
Yeah, I think we just, we, we need to evaluate. I mean, some, sometimes there are issues that fall under codes that we can address. And if we're made aware of them, and sometimes they're not, and those become the stickier ones, um, because there's not necessarily a role. But I think we can really, I think for us to just really have a better understanding of, I mean, we, like I said, we're aware of some and have worked with some over time. But we know that has been just in conversations that I know the mayor has had with businesses and, and the chamber, things we hear, um, that, that's an issue that's sort of rising to the top. And so we're looking at what options we have to be able to help address that or be a resource.
Any other council comments? Yeah, Ben?
On that topic, I just, you know, I want to mention again that I think it, it would be beneficial to take a look at how we encourage and incentivize those property owners to renovate and update those buildings and, and bring them into, you know, maybe better, um, compliance with the comprehensive plan and what we want to see happen along Johnson Drive and, you, you know, just make those facilities more attractive, both to tenants and their potential clients and so on. I think that we could probably do more to, to help those property owners and building owners, uh, nudge them along or, or look at, you know, what incentives and grants we have in place to help them make some of those buildings just a little bit nicer.
Yeah, I know that, uh, we issued IRBs for, uh, the dentist, Keith dentistry a couple of years ago, and I've brought this up a couple of times. You know, do we have a, a limit or a minimum threshold where we can offer that type of assistance for maybe a smaller, you know, a much smaller, uh, need? Because I know that was several million, but like Ben was saying, some of these people just need a little, little, little bit of help, not that net, not to that great of extent.
Yeah. We, I mean, we do have our business improvement grant program, which is not in the last couple of years, I don't think has been, we haven't expended all of those. So is, is it getting out and communicating? Or is it adding some additional dollars to that? Changing some of the limits, changing some of the matching requirements, what would incentivize? And I think we just have to kind of talk to people about what, what's it going to take? What are your, what are the barriers to you making the improvements to your property? Um, and then can we, do we have the ability to design some programs that could help you overcome those?
Yeah, Hillary?
Yeah, I just wanted to add, I would just encourage as you guys kind of plan out your agenda to think, you know, for that meeting, to think about maybe targeting for just the property owners in one conversation and, you know, just those business owners in another conversation. Cause I feel like the unique, the needs would be really unique for each group. And then also exploring some sort of written survey at, at both of those town halls, because some folks just aren't comfortable, you know, speaking loudly. And I'm not sure if, you know, and you guys already probably have this in the works, but that's just my feedback.
Well, yeah. And the, and this initial meeting, I think is targeted at the business community as opposed to landlords who are not also landlord tenants. So this is sort of a business focused one. But yeah, I, I agree. Circling back with the landlords makes sense after that. Yeah, Ken?
One final thought. I think that, um, one of the things I know that, that we don't want to be in the middle of relationship between a business and a landlord. I know that the chamber doesn't want to be in that position either. But I think that there could be a non-butsman kind of role in some fashion where information could be gathered with regards to concerns. And I don't know if that could be an independent person outside of any of these entities. But that may be one manner in which we could deal with some of these concerns that are brought up. As we discuss the gateway project for the umpteenth time, many of our existing businesses that I've spoken to individuals, I can't say many, but a few have voiced the fact that we incentivize new development, but we have no method to incentivize the smaller businesses that have been here longstanding and have never asked for any kind of benefits. And so balancing that or looking at a way in which we could balance what our incentives are, that they're not always to new development, but could be also look, looking at some of the existing.
Yes. And again, I think, um, part of that is I would, um, challenge that slightly. Uh, because I think it's the, the business improvement grant program was put in place back in 2004 and has, I don't have the numbers because I don't have the annual the, the look at that, but the investment that we've made and, and that was the, absolutely the intention. And council member Kring was here at the time. I wasn't, but, but that was an incentive that was provided to target. And the argument from the small business community was you're giving an incentive is kind of the first incentive, I think the, the city had granted. That you're giving that incentive and what are you, what do you know, what are you doing to help us? And so it was kind of the business improvement grant, the mission, MBD's mission business development corporation, a lot of the special events that were started um, in, in the interest of bringing and drawing customers, particularly to the downtown core. So that all rose out of that. And, and so do we have an opportunity to beef that up? Yes. Do we, can we do a better job of educating? Yes. But we struggle and have struggled to get people to take advantage of that. And it's targeted for those smaller businesses on that level, you know, that level of investment. So I think there's certainly a lot of things that we can explore. But it's easy, it's also easy sometimes to say we don't do anything for some of our small businesses. And I don't, I think we've been very careful over time to really try to, to preserve and protect, protect them.
Yeah. And I think we're trying to be really intentional about our, improving our outreach and our communication, because I think we do have some really positive feedback examples of people, you know, small businesses who have come forward and been able to work with the city, you know, successfully on things like the Sand Hills patio, or you know, the Rock Creek's special use permit. You know, there are lots of, lots of different scenarios of positives where the city has worked well with the small business community. But like Laura said, you know, it's not always well utilized. And so what can we do to improve those communication lines and that transparency about our programs and hear better from our businesses, what they're wanting in terms of assistance from the city? Any other council comments? Oh, and we are planning at some point as well to have an economic development work session to dive into a lot of this. Following the town hall, Laura and I had talked a little bit about scheduling on that and we're probably looking at Q1 of next year, just with the holidays are already upon us. So it's a little, little crazy at the end of the year, but hopefully, um, you know, after we have that business town hall, gather some more of sort of the current, current state of affairs and then have an ongoing council discussion. Cause I know that, that came up at our last retreat as well, to have a more focused discussion around our business community and economic development and proactive economic development. And what does that look like? Right. Anything else? Yes, Ken?
A reminder that the Ward Four Forum is going to be held on November the 8th. And Ben is going to solo this one. So, uh, it's at seven o'clock. I think it's going to be Zoom.
Yep. November 8th, Tuesday night, 7:00 PM. And, uh, yeah, looking forward to seeing everybody join. Hopefully some new faces.
Great. So next we will move into our council committee liaison reports. These reports allow the entire governing body to stay up to date with various activities of the boards, commissions and committees. First will be council members Kring and Thomas for the Sustainability Commission.
All right. The Sustainability Commission met a couple of weeks ago. Can't tell you how many weeks, but a couple of weeks. And we talked about our communities for all, uh, gold rating that, um, mission is featured in both the mission magazine and also on the website, um, continue to have strides there, which is great. And Emily presented about the communities for all ages, um, at the recent first suburbs coalition that council member Davis attended last Friday. The holiday light program, um, for recycling is happening again this year. So stay tuned for notifications on that. We couldn't remember if we reported on this or not, but the Sustainability Commission has officially passed the two tons worth of batteries being recycled. So that's a fun benchmark for the group. They're very excited about that. And, um, I think that's about it. I, I can't, I don't think I shared this, um, in our last meeting, but I wanted to share that for those of you that don't know that Emily was selected to be on the new Mark slash Climate Action KC, Climate and Environment Council, one of about 30 people who were selected from, selected from actually hundreds of applicants. And she is really the only North, uh, representative for Northeast Johnson County cities. And she's among innovators, uh, among some of the country's best engineering firms and scientists and all sorts of people. And there she is representing us. So I just, we're really lucky that she's got that seat at the table and just really proud of you, Emily. So thank you.
It's great. Anything to add, Debbie?
Yeah, I just, um, wanted to say we had an opportunity prior to the meeting to, to do a walkthrough in the community center, uh, through Penn, our, uh, Parks and Rec Director. And I just think I'd like somehow to work with Emily to kind of coordinate a, a similar tour for our sustainability commission, because we have so many sustainable approaches and practices and principles that are outlined throughout this community center. I think it'd be a wonderful opportunity for the, the Sustainability Commission to see what all is under the, the pipes and the behind the walls and things. So I'd like to work with you on that.
Great. Uh, next are council members Loudon and Rehard for Parks Recreation and Tree Commission.
Yeah. Quick little update here. Um, and let us know some Mohawk Park updates. So the parking lot that is going to be removed has begun to be removed, which is exciting. Um, and then they've also trenched into sanitary lines and asphalt has been ordered. So still kind of on, you know, the whole process of all of that. Um, I know feasibility pieces are still in the works for sure. Still waiting to hear back from Land Water Conservation Fund unless Penn has any updates. I'm seeing no, okay. Still kind of waiting on that. Um, we talked a little bit about, um, if you haven't been by Legacy Park recently, the heart that, the city of Mission has purchased is now in Legacy Park. Um, we talked about how that could kind of go on like a tour of parks here every couple of years, kind of switching up. There've been some new trees planted, um, Legacy Park and other locations. And yeah, that's really all that I have.
If anybody else saw the announcement, so Parade of Hearts is extending. They're kicking off for two more years and they're taking applications for the next round of artists. So we have reported, um, the location of our heart, which they had asked us to do. So hopefully we'll be featured on their, um, website soon, but it's fun to be able to extend that for the next couple of years.
Yeah. And I saw that next year is actually going to be a smaller grouping. So perhaps our enthusiasm in purchasing our heart will land us one of the hearts in the smaller group on this. I think this year is going to be like an off year, and then they're going to do the big, big round again, two years from now.
How much did we end up spending on that? And what, where did that come? Where did the, the dedicated money come from?
Yeah, Laura, can you speak to that again? I think our bid, I think we, our winning bid was $3,500 and it came from transient guest tax revenues.
All right. And now we'll hear from council member Boltinghouse on the Mission Magazine editorial board.
Yeah. Unfortunately, the editorial board did not meet this month, so I don't have an update, but I look forward to providing one at the next meeting.
Great. And final, finally, council member Chocey with family adoption. And we're into the busy season, right?
Yes, it's, as we've noted, the holidays are upon us. Yes, the family adoption committee met on September 29th. We've started receiving donations, which is great. We've got links up on, uh, the city website. We've really been, uh, working on, uh, trying to make it a little easier to get online and do those donations. And advertising that, uh, around the community center and in some of our other forms of media. Still working with harvesters and seeing some challenges, uh, in terms of getting the kinds of, uh, food products that we would want to have. So we're looking at, uh, other options for that and still, uh, hoping that we'll be able to work with them to, to get at least part of what we usually, um, need from harvesters. Uh, but looking into other options like gift cards and other stores and things. Let's see. So we are looking at potentially needing some, some freezer storage. So there's the idea of acquiring a freezer and, and finding a place to put some cold storage for things since we are, um, finding a need for some climate controlled food storage, um, based on just the fact that, uh, some of, some of the vendors that give us food, uh, require that now. And we can't store things outside in the, in the pot as much as we used to be able to. And then for frozen items, obviously we have to keep them frozen. Yes, I think that's just about it. As, as we said, the, the holidays are coming up. We've got lots of volunteers for the Thanksgiving event. And, you know, if you are still interested in helping, they'll always find a way to, uh, to, to put you to work. So you can reach out to Penn or the Parks and Rec Department. And then the volunteer dates, uh, And then the volunteer dates, those would be Monday, November 21st. And then in December for the holidays is Tuesday, December 20th. And so the committee will meet again tomorrow morning. And that's the end of my report.
Great. Thank you, Ben. Next is the mayor's report. So this evening I put before you the name of Michelle Van Dorn for appointment as Missions Representative to the Drug and Alcoholism County of United Community Services of Johnson County. And I don't think I see Michelle here tonight, but that's okay. So I would entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move the city council approved the appointment of Michelle Van Dorn as Missions Representative to the UCS Drug and Alcoholism Council.
Right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Yes, Ken?
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you for the nomination of Michelle. I think she'll do a great job. I was able to nominate her for this position. And so I, I really, with her background in social work and she's finishing her doctorate in social work as well, I think it'll be a beneficial appointment.
Yeah, good, good match. Robin, will you please call the roll? Kring?
Hi.
Thomas?
Yes.
Boltinghouse?
Aye.
Minmin?
Aye.
Davis?
Hi.
Rehard?
Aye.
Loudon?
Aye.
Chosie?
Aye.
Mission Case. Right, and Laura, do you have additional items you would like to share with us tonight?
Indulging in pictures, I think they're going to turn out great. Financial reports, I won't touch on a lot of detail. I think we're still, things are recovering well, continuing well. I think we've really almost not, we've made up, if not surpassed the revenue estimates on the sales tax that we had to repay earlier in the year. So that's been really encouraging. So I think, think, things look good on that from that standpoint. And then in the project status update report, thank you to council member Davis for your kudos. But those belong to all of these people sitting out in the audience and all the rest of the folks that come to work every day and accomplish all of these things. It's been good for us to be able to celebrate and share those accomplishments on an ongoing basis. It reminds us as well to slow down and think about all the things that we've been able to accomplish. And then we'll have that list ready to go at the end of the year. And it's much easier to turn into some version of a celebration of successes in our, in our annual report. So continue, if there are things, we talked a little bit about some of the closed businesses. If, as you read through these project status reports, if there's information that you would like to have or see in future reports, let us know. I'm still working on with the chief to get a couple of your reports on use of force and bias based formatted appropriately. We'll get those uploaded to the packet and sent out to you. I did want to just note, because I think it's a little bit confusing on the crime statistics report. The columns are really, when you go look at those, they're year to date for 2021 and 2022, and then a total for 2021. And the columns, the way they're labeled in the report aren't necessarily intuitive. So you kind of look at it and wonder why the numbers don't match. But I know the chief is always happy to answer any questions that anybody has about any of those. So we have, as I mentioned, just a couple of things. From a scheduling standpoint, October was a crazy meeting schedule for us. We are sort of back on track for November, so we will have committee meetings next Wednesday here, starting at 6:30. With very full agendas for next month and for December. So then we will have our regular council legislative meeting on the 16th. We will have our special city council meeting on the 21st dedicated to the gateway issues. Then we will have another special city council meeting on the 30th. Again, that one will be short for acceptance of the bids on the bond sale. Then in December, we typically move the committee meeting off of that first Wednesday because that is the Johnson County, Wyandotte County Council of Mayors holiday event that the invitation is extended to all of the members of the governing body that is getting ready to come out to you. I think you probably already received it.
Yep.
And Robin will be asking for RSVPs. So that happens on December 7th. So our committee meeting in December is going to be on the 14th and our city council meeting will be on the 21st. So we are bumping right up against the holidays this year. So just a couple of those dates to, to remember. So November, I think is going to probably go past in a blur, but we do have a lot just with regular year end with the things that we're looking at with this bond sale, with the issues with Gateway. Everybody's got a lot of sort of plates spinning in the air in this last couple of months. On the 21st, I believe it's 6:00 PM. And then we haven't set the time on the 30th. So if you all have a preference, please let us know. It's at six on the 21st.
Yeah. Yeah, do we have any questions for Laura or the rest of staff on our Q2, Q3 update or anything else? Seeing none, we would move into executive session, but we do not have a need for executive session this evening. So before we adjourn tonight, I want to share with the public that the video from this meeting will be available through a link on our website at missionks.org. There being no further business tonight, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to it. It's going to be fun.